Crazy.
But that's all the time.
I'm sure. You narrow it down a little bit, you know.
A little bit.
Okay.
We are live.
We're ready to look.
Yep, we are.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you tonight to the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners's regular monthly meeting. Today is Tuesday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and it is seven oh one P. M., and we are assembled here in the Commissioners' Boardroom of City Hall. I will read the mission of the city, which is that the City of Oxford is to serve and improve our community by providing high-quality, affordable services, sound planning for growth and development, and offering the highest possible quality of life while maintaining the public's trust through open communication and ethical standards at all times. And I would like to ask anyone who has electronic devices to please mute them or turn them off at this time, and I would like to invite Pastor Bruce Beck of West Oxford Baptist Church for all those who are so inclined to open our meeting in prayer.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's pray. Father, we bow before you tonight, just humbled by the fact that we can gather here together tonight to take place in this meeting, to conduct business. Father, we praise you continually for your blessings upon our community. We thank you for the leadership that you have put in place, and we praise you for your wisdom, your direction. And, Father, we are much humbled by the fact that we can be here and conduct business and think about other places in the world, much like Ukraine, where there's much sorrow, much suffering. And we thank you for the opportunity to give us to pray and to respond, and we continue to pray that you would rise up. Father, we continue to lift our hearts, our prayers to the situation. Pray that you'll continue to raise up us as Americans to respond in a way that brings you much glory. Thank you for this time that you give us tonight. May you lead, guide, and direct, and Jesus, and we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor. And at this time, Commissioner Theresa Gilreath will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, we will consider adjustments to and approval of the agenda. Are there any changes that anyone requests? Okay. If there are no changes, all in, we have all in favor of approving the agenda as it stands, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? The agenda stands adopted. In order to provide for the highest standards of behavior and transparency in governance, our board has approved a code of ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for ourselves and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct. Among those, that we should avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. I now inquire whether any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of such with respect to any matters before the board tonight. If any of you do know of conflict of interest or appearance of such, please state so at this time. For the record note, no conflicts. At this time, we have the public comment portion of our agenda, and I do not believe that anybody has signed up for public comment. So with that, we will have the swearing in of our new police chief, Pat Ford, as the City of Oxford's first female police chief of police. Chief Ford officially took office on March first, and our city clerk, Cynthia Bowen, will swear her in. Please. I think it's there just for you.
Patricia A. Ford.
I am Patricia A. Ford.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert.
That I will be alert.
And vigilant to enforce.
And vigilant to enforce.
The criminal laws.
The criminal laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter.
In any matter.
On account of personal bias.
On account of personal bias.
Or prejudice.
Or prejudice.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain the Constitution.
And maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of North Carolina.
North Carolina.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
Therefore.
Therefore.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge.
Discharge.
And execute the duties.
And execute the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a lawful officer.
As a lawful officer.
And chief of police.
And chief of police.
Bramble County.
Bramble County.
North Carolina.
North Carolina.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
Abilities.
Abilities.
And judgment.
And judgment.
So help me God. Thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
Yes.
Okay.
Speech.
Thank you all. I will not let you down. Thank you, Mr. Ford, and I appreciate his support from our community also. Thank you all so very much. Good job. I was plucking in.
Close the gap.
I'm going to get out. That's right. Lieutenant Eric Coghill, Lieutenant Michael Stockwell, and my husband Giovanni.
How fitting this is that we should do this during National Women's Month.
Yes.
Hooray for strong women leaders. Thank you very much, all of you, and our chief Ford. And with this, we will invite forward our city engineer, Amy Ratliff, to do a presentation to the board and public on the Oxford Resurfacing Initiative. Board members, I believe you have additional detail at your place, at your seat.
I'm one of the city engineers for Oxford, and I wanted to give you a little bit of clue about all the work we're going to have out here actually, specifically with regard to the resurfacing. And between the city and D O T, and this was a plan that we worked on with D O T since about twenty fifteen, is coordinating their resurfacing project with the cities because just like when you go to Costco and you can get some better deals to buy in bulk, because D O T does larger projects and does something with them, we could actually get lower prices than doing it on our own. The D O T is doing all of the roads that are in blue. The city is doing all the streets that are in red, and the black ones are resurfacing projects that are completed when clear. So what you've seen around town recently with all the traffic signs going up and road closures and roads working ahead, the D O T contractor, Sunrock, was doing patching work, and they had completed all of their patching work on the roads that are designated for passing, and they are going to take a break to see whether or not those patches fail, and then they'll come back probably mid to late summer, maybe early fall, and do the resurfacing on those roads. So you'll see a break in between all the signs up and not anything going on, but it's supposed to be that way. So looking just a little bit closer at the downtown area, it shows you that we are resurfacing quite a few streets in the downtown area. Main, Williamsboro, Spring, Wall, Watkins, M L K, Broad, the Planet Hand, so we've got a lot of the roads that are coming into the downtown area that are being resurfaced either by the city or the D O T. Here are the dash blinds are city and the solid blinds are D O T. One of the things that we are doing as part of our utility project is we're going to install college medians on College Street, and you can see we've got small medians, one hundred and eighty-five feet, and this one stretches about seven hundred and fifty when we run between the Planet Hand and Red Creek Street. These streets will go from Watkins all the way to Alexander, and that's part of a utility project. And here's some little rendering that shows, you know, what that will conceptually look like.
What's the width of the median?
The width of the median is ten feet. We have water being installed on one side, sewer being installed on the other. This will actually save us on the cost of trying to patch D O T roads, and it actually turns out to be less expensive to put a median on College Street, and it also helps save all the old trees that are down through there by getting the utilities away from the edge of the roads, and it also provides a landscaped entrance as you're coming into Oxford from the north. And, you know, some of the possibilities for going into the median and all this because it is a D O T road will have to be approved by them, but they have said, you know, grass, flower, low shrubs are all acceptable. Lighting is something that they will have to look at the type of fixtures to make sure that they will allow those, but this kind of looks like, you know, the rendering of what it might look like as you're coming down the road, showing a light fixture in the middle. These are some of the light fixtures that we're looking at for doing actually on, in the median. They didn't really have the conceptual plans to show the median itself. About twenty-six hundred feet between Watkins and Alexander, they put the lights on every two hundred and twenty-five feet, about broad lights. Now, we would look at it with D O T and determine if more lights need to be installed or less. These would be more of a decorative nature, not necessarily street lights.
Electric or gas?
It will be electric. What D O T is telling us at this point is if we install a conduit going from the edge of the road where the power poles are to the median and install conduit in the median, they will actually put the lights up for about six hundred dollars each. Now, we will have a monthly fee that is based on the type of fixture that we put in. The decorative lights are a little bit more pricey than the standard street lights, but they are certainly admirable for what they offer and what we get and can show people coming in. And so, you know, all of these, of course, must be approved by D O T before they go in. We are actually looking at street lighting in not just the downtown or median areas. We are looking at street lighting that is something that Captain Ford and myself and some of her staff, as has disappeared, you know, have gone out and we have looked at different areas where they have identified pedestrian and vehicular lights and vehicular collisions and making sure that we can provide, you know, a safe place for people to walk or bike when it is out in the dark. And so we're looking at areas that are on North Carolina, like N C ninety-six corridor, looking at from about the Kings Motel up through the New Domino's, and some of that area right there, looking down Industry Drive, going back from the intersection towards the new Jakes Ridge and the Coventry. That curb right there is really dark after, after sun goes down, and Cheryl, our planning director, is also putting a sidewalk down through that area, so we want to make sure that when the sidewalk goes in, we'll have some street lights there. We're also looking, we found out during the parade, when everybody was trying to find their spot on the Spring Street, that there was not good lighting on Spring Street going around the corner. So we've identified some areas, and the police department has been kind enough, because they are on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, that they have gotten some shots at to show what it looks like versus those of us that are lucky enough to work during the day. Some of the Main Street improvements down by the Baptist Church and the post office, we are looking at a couple options to put a median that's about six feet wide and about two hundred feet long in that vicinity. We're looking at whether we can use it as curb and gutter and landscaping, or whether that goes in as a solid concrete, concrete with a painted brick look to it. So we've got a couple different options there. We're having some challenges. Everybody has got more business than they can handle at this point in time, so we're trying to work it into another project to see if we can handle it that way. And when I talk about painted brick, this is kind of the look. I don't know if you can pick your mouth there, but the bullet is right here. When we were doing this on Wall Street, we went in and we did a painted brick scenario there to see how well it looked and whether that was something that we wanted to consider. With D O T, we would be looking at putting potentially white lines on either side of the crosswalk and then just have the brick look in the middle. And we were talking to D O T about this. Once again, D O T students, we go to get D O T blessing, but rather than put the white high-visibility crosswalks that are not quite as aesthetically pleasing, we're looking at different ways that we can kind of spruce up the downtown area that has been looked at for part of the downtown master plan in the past. So in other areas, you know, some people put in a painted island where it's not necessarily just quite the yellow striping. We can look at that. These are the high-visibility stripes I was speaking of. Some folks, when they put in, instead of putting painted areas, excuse me, they put in the landscaped areas, and we have looked at some of the different areas that we can do that. We have a spreadsheet that none of y'all can read, and the board has handouts that should make it a bit easier to look at, but identifying different locations and what it would cost to put these painted brick crosswalks into the downtown area. We have some that, you know, are about twenty-seven hundred dollars. We have, you know, it could be twenty-four thousand dollars for an intersection on four sides. So that's something that we'll go through, and the board will look at and say, okay, we want to look at doing it in these locations, or we may want to do something else, but the crosswalk, you know, cost per crosswalk is somewhere around the, an average of four thousand dollars per crosswalk. Depending on the width of the road, how light the crosswalk is, that cost certainly varies. If we did some of the Williamsboro Street improvements, and this is at the intersection, College Street is going north off the top of the page, and we have Main Street coming south. This would be in the vicinity of the Bramble County Courthouse in Milano's. If we added medians in that area or bulb outs, we are looking at putting, you know, those islands in. It is rather pricey. I know we have talked about doing these, this work in different meetings. D O D C is one of them. You know, what can we, what can we do to spruce up downtown? If we did all of the islands here as landscaped islands, it would cost us in the neighborhood of about two hundred thousand dollars to do Williamsboro Street. So this is not an inexpensive undertaking. This would be, you know, the islands that are landscaped as well as the painted brick crosswalks. So, you know, this is something that we are talking with D O T. As I've said once before, D O T have rules when they own the street. Main Street improvements, we'd be looking at about seventy-five thousand, seventy-six thousand if you did the additional work on Main Street at islands, bulb outs, painted crosswalks. So, you know, these are some things that we are considering. Some of the funding options that we have, when we entered into the contract with D O T for the resurfacing project, they asked for their payment upfront, and we had to send them a check for one point four million dollars. When the bid actually came in, it came in at one point two million dollars, and so we've got a little over two hundred thousand dollars that is not committed in that bid that we can utilize to either potentially do other projects or that we can get a check back at the end to say, okay, we didn't utilize all the money. Now, of course, we've only gone through the patching. We still have to do the resurfacing and any patching that the discovery has been done during what is called a mill and fill, where they mow the road and then fill it back in with asphalt. That way, the road level doesn't continue rising when you have a curb and you end up with a street that starts getting this nice little U shape, and we'll keep it there or you end up taking into the curb and gutter trying to keep it flatter. So mill and fill allows you to keep that road flatter. So we are also looking at the ARPA funds that the city was awarded as part of all of the COVID experience that we have been going through, and they have actually loosened up those rules, and they are now actually allowing transportation and construction needs to be utilized or to be funded with the ARPA money. So those are some of the areas that we're looking at, and the board will take it into consideration. So really quick through all of that information, and if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to intervene.
I'll be able to pay for all this.
That was the last.
All the other money?
That's the last one, weren't you?
That's what I was listening to. You had some variety, you had some variations in there, and I wondered, assuming if you get that much money back, can you, whatever you have that you, that you talked about?
I can't do anything. This is the board here cannot.
Mayor, let's start with the questions up here, I think would be most appropriate.
Good plan.
Oh, that's good.
Let's, let's see if the board has anything that they would like to pass.
Yeah, could, could the ARPA funds be used for the landscaping? I, I think the answer is yes, but just to clarify, if, for the bulb outs?
They, they can be used for transportation infrastructure, and an island bulb out would be considered transportation infrastructure.
What is the total amount of the ARPA funds? Are we entitled to any more?
I will take that one. Yes, we are entitled to another tranche of funds coming in twenty-two, twenty-three. We've received our first, which was one point four million. We'll receive another one point four in twenty-two, twenty-three. You have to expend it by twenty-twenty-six. So, you know, we've been having several conversations about the ARPA funding and what its best utilization is, and with the caveat, of course, that you need to expend it by twenty-twenty-six. And the bulk of the funding, you know, we may well still need to commit some of that to the Car Lake Regional Water System project. So this is potentially an option here to do this. This is why we kind of wanted to have this conversation and presentation this evening is that the resurfacing initiative is, is coming. We've got projects that have been awarded. The College Street project is moving forward, and all of these have interplay and connect and intertwine, and, you know, we were really trying to maximize not only the biggest bang for the buck that we could get, but how attractive this package could potentially be in Oxford and Oxford's transformation. I think you can potentially visualize what you would see coming down College with those lights there, with it newly resurfaced, and coming into the downtown area and seeing the painted crosswalks and the new pavement and all of those things, and imagine if you're a visitor and your first time coming to Oxford and experiencing all of that. So that was the real initiative in it, as well as the timing in all of this. If we're going to move forward with any of this that's been presented tonight, you know, we, we have a limited amount of time to really make those decisions in order to have the contacts, get the contracts. We've got to work with contractors. D O T, a part of the College Street project would be, of course, the installation of the conduit necessary, you know, to power it. So we would be working with the contractor that we currently have selected for the utility project that's going up and down College Street, so there's a lot of things intertwined in all of this, and the clock keeps ticking basically every day. The D O T and its contractor have already started, you know, with the work that they have begun. So all of these things, you know, take a little bit of time in working with other entities of the state and private sector to get all the stars aligned to make all this happen, not to mention the fact of simply ordering some of these materials and getting them here in a timely fashion. So, you know, some, some decisions need to be made, and we wanted to get in front of you tonight to, number one, catch you up to date with where we are with all of this and what's going on, and to let you know what's potentially coming, and to provide you with some of these options, as well as inform the public again as to what, you know, potentially can take place, and to also apprise you of the funding and what these additional enhancements may cost as far as components to this project if you choose to expand it.
Is that one point four million additional dollars guaranteed, or is it dependent on?
It is. It's, it's already been approved by Congress and signed by the president, so, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
The extra lighting for the areas that you and the chief police, the dark areas, were you going to try to incorporate that too with some of the ongoing projects, or would it stand alone?
That would probably stand alone.
Okay.
Because Amy didn't mention it, but part of the reason why we're looking at the existing street lighting configuration across the city is when we converted from LED lights to LED from the sodium vapor, the cone of light is now different with LED, and, you know, the spacing that the city has in its street lighting program is five hundred feet per each street light. So when those LED lights were put in there, the cone of light's a little bit narrower. It's focused more on the street rather than the diffusing of the light itself. So we're looking across the city to see where some of these areas may be that need some additional street lighting to take place with the new LED-style lights. But, you know, one of, one of the places that is probably the most significant and worthy is where Amy mentioned, out, you know, near McDonald's and Speedway in that area. We've had a few accidents out there with pedestrians, you know, trying to cross and interacting with vehicles. Additional lighting out there certainly wouldn't hurt, and it is an enhanced attraction to coming off of eighty-five and coming into the city after dark for our visitors as well. Right now, there's not a lot of street lighting down there, so it's something to look at.
A lot of the lights in that vicinity are owned by McDonald's or by Burger King or by the dealership, and once they close up, those lights turn off, and then there's nothing. So, and the other thing we're looking at is whether or not we can just increase the wattage of the bulbs that are there, so going from seventy-five watt to a hundred and five watt rather than adding another light. So we're looking at several different options.
And I notice, also notice you said right here, Spring Street, right at that gym with, I guess that we would go down there now and see how many cars are there and children, you know, basketball, it, it is really dark right in that perimeter, so.
It is, and, and not to get too far carried.
Yeah, yeah.
Entirely different subject, but, you know, you could potentially envision that decorative style lighting surrounding the Hicks Mall.
The complex, yeah.
So related to that, I was at a mayor's conference in Lexington a week and a half ago, or actually a few weeks ago, and they have solar decorative streetlights there. Is that something particularly related to the, I mean, I, I think it's something worth looking at for our own downtown. The solar panel was not as obtrusive as I thought it might be, because you're really, your attention is drawn to the light.
I've, I've seen those too, and I think that we would have that conversation with Duke about what options that they have. From my understanding, and the ones that I have seen and the ones that have been installed, typically they, they are, there is still that connection to the electric grid.
So is that something worthwhile, my reaching out to the mayor and the city manager there since they just did a presentation and maybe, you know?
Absolutely, absolutely. We'd be glad to look at that.
Okay. Great.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
So if I heard you correctly, of the one point four million roughly that we paid D O T in advance, and the bid came back, is an, you know, we have a, we have a surplus or, you know, a little over two hundred, two hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. Give or take a couple pennies. That, that balance, are you, is the intention to hold that balance for any overages during the process of construction, or, or could those funds be used for bump outs or lighting or other, other projects that are going on simultaneously?
I'll let Amy answer that one, but there, there are some unknowns.
Sure. Sure.
That they may uncover and discover during this process that, you know, may chew into that.
Yep.
So I, I'm sure they're probably going to want to hold on to it until the project is complete and then release it. But, um, you know, you're paying Peter, robbing Peter to pay Paul.
And, you know, if we do as the progress, you know, as the project progresses, you know, and we see that we are coming under budget, you know, then it's something that we can move forward with DOT. As Alan said, we start getting the approvals now, start ordering materials now depending on what it is that we are doing and have that lined up so that if we have additional funds, we could slide it right in. Or we can do that, you know, additional projects on our own, but having them shovel ready, so to speak, is, you know, the ability to say, okay, we, we ended up maybe with $300,000 extra because they came in under budget. But it could very well be that they find something unknown and they eat up that dependency that is what I would call it.
Gotcha. Yeah, I, I would assume that there's probably a few skeletons under the, so to speak, in terms of old infrastructure and we're going to run into issues, happens. The only other comment I have is I'm certainly in favor of any, any landscape, any softscaping, which we, which you know I've, I've voiced many times, but in the downtown area, as much as we can create some, some surfaces that can absorb some rainwater and also have some, some plants and some flowers and some, and/or decorative stone, whatever it might be, we're certainly in favor because it's definitely, definitely concrete and asphalt right now. Where we can stand it.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Yeah, um, I suspect that after some of our citizens review the cost of some of this, and I think you even mentioned that it's kind of pricey. Can you talk a little bit about some of the safety issues that come into play with medians and/or roundabouts? Because when we were doing the roundabout, I got a lot of phone calls and a lot of folks making comments about the roundabout. And then when it got finished and folks started using it, some people came back to me indicating they really do like it. But isn't there safety issues for medians and/or roundabouts and?
Yes, there certainly are. One of, one of the things that they call this is a road diet. You're reducing the amount of asphalt that cars have to travel on. You still have a lane of traffic instead of it being, you know, College Street is extremely wide considering we only have one-way traffic. When you put a median down through the middle and you, or you put bulb outs on Williamsburg Street or on Main Street, if you have less space to travel in, you tend to slow down just automatically. You're going to be a little bit more careful and you don't, you know, you know that if you're trying to eat your sandwich while you're driving, you know, you, there's more of a chance that you might bump into something. Where on College Street right now, you, you could do, you know, loops just about and still stay in your lane. So, you know, that's, that's something that, you know, the road diet certainly helps reduce the amount of space that a pedestrian, if, you know, mom with a baby in a stroller is trying to cross the road, instead of having, you know, 65 feet of asphalt to go across and look for traffic in, they may only have, you know, 30 or 40 feet. So the less amount of time pedestrians are in the roadway is the less of an opportunity for them to be hit. And it, you know, just gives a, you know, the, it does provide safety. And certainly, you know, the police chief has experienced, their department has experienced too many calls where pedestrians and vehicles have tangled and I can tell you that pedestrians never win. So certainly the safety is a big aspect of it, not just the aesthetically pleasing or, you know, adding additional space that is purview instead of impervious where the rainwater and everything can get through. So definitely.
Especially with cradle school being on College Street as well.
Yep, absolutely. Other questions to send? I have one last one. You just discussed painted crosswalks with this brick motif, but you used the example of what we have down on, I think that's Wall Street. And, and that is actually that granular epoxy applique on it. So are you, when you're referring to that, are you actually referring to what, what we have with respect to the estimates that, that texture that really does look quite rickety?
It's, it's kind of like Kleenex, you know? If, if you get puffs, it's still a Kleenex. Everybody calls a tissue a Kleenex, you know?
Right.
And so painted brick is a, you know, there are several different industries, you know, and manufacturers supply variations of painted bricks. So, you know, I've actually reached out to a couple other manufacturers to see what other options there are. But you're correct, this was more of a granular. You can see the bucket of, you know, right there, that's the things that you print.
Roofing asphalt stuff.
This is a stencil that makes it look like the brick and you put it down and you scatter the beads and you pull it up.
Right, so, and.
But it's painted, you know, it's not part of the asphalt.
Right.
It's a thermoplastic overlay basically.
Well, this was the, it's actually the grains that are used on roofing shingles and, and it's been, but the reason that I ask because with the, I've also seen them with brick. I mean, with, with actual paint and that wears off sooner. It starts to look like concrete underneath. So that was what my question was, thank you.
But there are also other options in regards to, you know, what it can look like. It doesn't have to be that red brick color.
Right.
There are other variations.
Absolutely.
If you want to consider, you know, something a little different, a little unique in your color scheme or, you know, with your branding motif, whatever you want to do.
Absolutely.
So you can look at it from that perspective as well, that there are some potential other color options.
I think the mayor answered my questions. I was saying about slipability. How slippery is it when it rains on it? But if it's got those granules on there, then hopefully it won't be slippery at all.
Right, and that is something that we would consider even if we do look at another manufacturer. But, and as Alan stated, you know, these, this, the city actually put polka dots, different colored polka dots, in their painted areas. And this is something that we could do as, okay, the first phase is something that is just painted on the asphalt and then later on we come back and do the bulb outs and the landscaped areas or it's a combination, you know, piece by piece as we have the funds to do it. It doesn't have to be all or nothing.
Is there a, oh, I'm sorry.
No.
No, is, is there, do you have a, to the extent that you can answer this question, but in terms of the different paint materials that you can use, do they, do they provide you any type of ongoing maintenance costs with those and I, just in terms of what that would cost a city to maintain over a period of time?
Typically, you're just going to look at the lifespan. It's not something that you would typically come back and touch up. Normally, you come back and reapply it every so many years and it just depends on the life of that particular product.
Sorry? Okay, so.
I, I would suggest unless there are additional questions, you know, in the observance of time tonight, I mean, we could talk about this for quite some time to come, that we refer this to the Public Works Committee.
That was exactly what I was going to say.
Convene that committee just as quickly as we possibly can in order to meet specifically on that topic and make some decisions and recommendations because it is a timely decision. Some of these things need to be made.
So Commissioner Bullock, you'll get with your committee members and the city clerk and work on, work on a time and I will try to get in touch with the Lexington folks to see if we can get some information on those solar lights so that we can feed that into that same discussion.
Thank you.
Awesome, wonderful. Ms. Ratliff, outstanding presentation. Thank you very much. You know it's good when everybody wants to talk about it. That's great. So thank you so much. With that, we move forward to the public hearing portion of our agenda. And item A is a public hearing to receive citizen input regarding the conditional rezoning request from C A B Granville LLC for property located on the outer loop, northeast and Landis Road. The property total is 76.29 acres with 37.9 acres being within the city's ETJ. Currently, the property is zoned RA. The GR10 conditional use allows voluntarily added conditions by the applicant. The applicant proposes prohibiting multifamily dwelling units and limiting the development to only six units per acre or 457 dwelling units. The comprehensive plan shows that the property is zoned as mixed use. The applicant previously submitted the rezoning of the property, a rezoning request from RA to GR10, which would have allowed up to 10 dwelling units per acre or 760 dwelling units. Instead, the applicant now proposes a development that would limit the development to six dwelling units per acre. As we said, 457 dwelling units. The applicant is also proposing that multifamily dwelling units or apartments be prohibited. And members of the board, you have support materials in attachment 4A. With that, I declare the public hearing open and I inquire whether anyone in the section to our right and your left would like to come forward to speak on this issue. Is there anyone in the center section that would like to come forward to speak on this issue? Yep, please. Go forward to the podium, state your name and address and we'd love to hear from you.
George Foster, 313 Cherry Street. All that talk about paving, I know our sidewalk disappears after about 100 feet. Regarding this, this 76 acres, all the housing I know of over there is at least an acre zoning. And I don't understand why outside of town you would want to zone it so densely. And that's that. I mean, it, it, all of Salem Pardron, I think is an acre or more and the houses on nearby are all an acre or more per lot. I don't understand why six lots per acre are that far out of town.
So I, I think my response to that, my response would be it is the developer and the landowner who are engaged in an agreement and this is what the developer proposes. So certainly.
Well, if I'm the developer, I would propose that too. They propose 10. You know, I, I, I've talked about what it's like to have 10 units per acre. If you put single-family homes on it and you want to play in the backyard with your dog, your dog, it better be a Chihuahua because you don't have any space at all. But six units per acre is still pretty dense and, uh, as I say, I, I, I don't, I, I can't see a basis for, for doing that. I exhort you to tell the developer that one acre lots and they can build, they can build 32 houses on that 37 acres or they can walk.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foster. And is there anyone else in the center section who would like to come forward to speak on this issue? Is there anyone in the sen, please step forward.
My name is Rob Atkins. I live at 5619 Marion Lane, which is off of Landis. Well, matter of fact, the only road on Landis. It is a situation where, you know, as being a business owner here in town and in, in Creemoor, particularly what we do, we, we look forward to the growth of the city and, and growth of the time around. I would probably tend to also agree that there seems to be a, a lot of, that's a lot of, lot of buildings in a small place. But my biggest concern is always going to be traffic coming, traffic is already big out of that road if you, between the school and people coming down that way to get on to 85 and, you know, I think we're going to have some issues when it comes to, for traffic and getting traffic in and out and streetlight and stoplights and some other things that are going to have to take place on, on both ends, the Salem farm, the Salem end and the Tatch Creek end. And really my, one of my, it's not something that can be dealt with and, and I'm, I'm a business owner as well, so I, I, I know about profitability. But we also have to make sure that my, one of, the biggest concern about the people that live on our road, and we only are nine people, so that's, that's the way it is, is that the townhomes become sold to not individuals, they become investment properties. And then those investment properties, which is great for the investor, become rentals. And that is one of the biggest things we, we suggest and I'm not speaking for everyone because I didn't speak to everybody on my road this last week or so, but just the fact that it could become apartments even though they're not apartments. And that's just a point I'd like to make and, but we do thank you for the growth and we look forward to what the city and the county have together to make us grow and boom the city.
There you go. Thank you very much, Ms. Ratliff. Mr. Thornton, they're really, oh, it's.
No, I, I was just going to ask a question.
Yes, absolutely.
Because, you know, we, we do have a lot of development that has happened. It's my understanding that as part of the development, there is supposed to be a traffic analysis done in conjunction with anybody that tries to do development. So I know there were some concerns about the traffic, but, but I think that's supposed to be part of the puzzle. And that is to make sure we do address the increased traffic and, and make sure there's an analysis done so that we do have roads that allow you to go in and out of those developments in, in a safe manner.
Well, and there, I'm sorry, and there are two, I mean, there's two outgoing to the loop, you know, there's one coming out to Landis, there's one other coming, some, I could, the map was pretty small, so I was trying to, to look at it as best I could. And I'm sure there is, but just for your information, it wasn't long ago when Landis was dirt, okay? It was a dirt road. And now, and it's a wonderful road right now because we, we get to go and not get our cars dirty all the time. But, but it's just a concern, we're on one far end. We don't have to go very far to get to Tatch Creek to get where we need to get, but just as a total movement of people. Because if you talk about 300 homes or whatever the case may be, times two cars and all the other stuff, it becomes, becomes a lot. And we just want to make sure that those particular things are thought about as, as plans are made.
That's right.
But thank you.
Thank you very much. And with respect to, to that concern on both sides, Ms. Hart, you would get, would the results of the traffic impact analyses come to you or would they go to Ms. Ratliff or it just goes to everybody? How does, how does that work?
So yes, the, um, the TIA will come to myself, Amy and DOT. And if they are proven for this conditional rezoning, they will work on that TIA before they bring the specific site home and ask for approval to be launched at that point.
Right. So that doesn't completely answer your question, but I, I think, Mr. Atkins, if you wanted to stay in touch with Ms. Hart through the process, if the zoning gets improved, there would be a way to find out what accommodations they would be asked to make to, to deal with the traffic. Any other questions from any board members down here?
I just have one, one question, probably Ms. Hart. In teeny tiny, eensy weensy writing on the project summary, so the total density shown is, is really 4.9 units per acre, not, not the six that was requested.
They do, they cap it at six.
Yep.
But, and they are showing they cap it at six, so when they do the engineering and putting in the roads, it may be a little bit over the four and they, but they're cap it at six.
Okay, got you.
And I just realized that we're actually still in the middle of the public hearing. So that was my error. So, uh, anybody else would like to speak from this side of the room?
As an applicant.
Okay.
Yes, and I was going to see if I could use this laptop and we've got a presentation that we could show the commission members.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We appreciate your patience. about concerns with rental homes. There is nothing that, whatever happens, happens.
Once an individual owns it, it's, it's America, let's put it that way.
That's right.
Just one little concern.
No, but in, that's why there's merit, you never know what kind of answer you're going to get, so...
You know, unless there's a homeowners association, and it's established in homeowners association bylaws or something, that would govern.
Right.
Not the city.
That's what I thought. So that would be the appropriate follow-up question, Mr. Atkins, would be a homeowners association that would govern the amount of properties that were rental. And if you can, for the purpose of the record, identify yourself and your firm.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Worth Mills with Longleaf Law Partners. Do you want the address as well?
And do you want the, you can get that to her if she wants it.
So again, good evening, mayor and city commissioners. I appreciate your patience as we loaded this presentation. I'm here on behalf of the property owner, CAB Granville LLC, as well as the rezoning applicant, APG Capital LLC. I am joined by Wayne Hightower with APG Capital, as well as Patrick Barbeau with Timmons Group, who can assist with questions as needed. We are requesting to rezone the property at Zero Landis Road, which is 76.29 acres from a mix of RA, R15, and AR40, which is Granville County zoning, to the proposed GR10 conditional district with the following conditions, which are no more than six units per acre, which would permit a total of 457 units on that 76 acres. And we are also prohibiting the multifamily dwelling units as well. This slide here just shows the property from the Granville County GIS map. It is divided into three sections by the Oxford Loop Road and the, and Landis Road, and we have an existing pond on that easternmost portion. This slide here shows the existing conditions and the existing topography and natural features. On the western boundary of the site, we have a stream tributary that flows north-south, and we also have a stream that bisects the property into a north and a south portion as well. This slide shows the two planning jurisdictions on the property. And you can see on the areas, the 2017 aerial map pulled from Granville County GIS. Most of these lots are larger, most are relatively undeveloped and wooded. That purple shade denotes the city of Oxford's planning jurisdiction, and the orange shade denotes the Granville County's planning jurisdiction. And you can likely see, and I'll try to highlight it here, oh, sorry. This red outline here denotes part of the city of Oxford's city limits. So in conjunction with our rezoning request, we have submitted an annexation petition to bring the entire property within the city of Oxford's corporate limits and its planning jurisdiction. The annexation petition is also on the agenda tonight, following the public hearing of this rezoning request. This is an excerpt of the city of Oxford zoning map, prepared in 2010, showing portions of the property there in the blue stars. So this would be, sorry, pointer issue. So that's the easternmost portion, which is within the city of Oxford planning jurisdiction. There is a small portion that is in the ETJ, in that black outline there. And then the balance of the property up here is within Granville County's planning jurisdiction. So as you can see, these are some of the older legacy districts that have been updated by the 2021 UDO update. And again, those blue stars represent our portions of the property there. So current zoning districts, we have three. And again, the AR40 zoning district is a Granville County zoning district. It is established to promote an agricultural, forestry, conservation-type uses with very low density and with few public services available. The R15 district, which has since been updated, or the GR3 zoning district was intended to replace that R15 zoning district. R15 capping density at 2.7 units an acre. This new GR3 district, that was part of that UDO update, caps density at three units per acre. And then finally, the residential agricultural RA district is intended to accommodate scattered farm and non-farm uses on large tracts, where again, public utilities are not generally available. That density is recommended at one unit per acre. This slide here shows the city of Oxford's future land use map, with stars highlighting those portions of the property. This future land use map was adopted by the board in 2009. Our property is designated for mixed use, and is also partially within the Highway 58 corridor overlay. And so with that mixed use designation, we believe that our rezoning to GR10, which permits both single-family and townhouse building types, is consistent with that mixed use development designation on the city's future land use map. And I apologize for some of the small text here. I will do my best to read it off. So again, we are proposing to rezone the property to general residential 10. This district is intended for moderate to high-density residential development and related recreational, religious facilities, educational, and civic uses in areas that are served by public utilities. Under the general development, or the general zoning district of GR10, we would be permitted up to 10 dwelling units per acre. Now again, we have submitted conditions voluntarily that would limit our total development to only six units per acre, which again, 457 total units versus the 760 that would otherwise be permitted in the GR10 district. We have also prohibited the multifamily building type, and we have limited building types to a combination of single-family and townhome building types. And at the previous commissioner meeting, when this case was being set for a public hearing, there was some discussion on what types of building types we were prohibiting and which ones we were allowing. So a dwelling townhome in the new UDO is defined as residential buildings with three or more dwelling units that share common walls, but each townhome unit is located on a parcel of land that conveys with the structure. So what I mean by that is if Mr. Hightower and his team came in with a subdivision plan, each townhome unit would have its own lot. So these would not be condominium-style lots. You would take title to both the building and the land underneath it. Now, in the case of a multifamily building type, that is defined in the UDO as a building containing three or more dwelling units on a single lot. That could take the form of a, you know, garden-style apartment. It could take the form of a conventional apartment, or you could even, you know, develop under a condominium scenario, where you're only taking title to the building itself and not the land. And so what our conditions have done is they allow the applicant to construct the townhome building type, while also limiting density closer to that GR5 district, that five units per acre, and again, prohibiting some of those more incompatible building types, given the location of this property in relation to the rest of the city. This slide here shows a potential site layout. This is a conceptual layout only. Within the new UDO framework, under a conditional rezoning application, where the applicant submits conditions that are only more strict than the underlying base zoning district, we do not submit the more detailed site plans that you might see under a planned unit development or a master plan. So again, this is conceptual, but it gives you an idea of how this property could be laid out. So again, what we are looking at is taking 66 of the 76 total acres here and setting those aside for development. The 10-plus acres on the western side of Oxford Loop Road, we intend to keep that vacant, although we do expect to connect to sewer through an existing manhole adjacent to that property or that portion of the property. We also believe that we will have water connection from an existing manhole along Oxford Loop Road. Just to give you an idea of what this plan proposes specifically, so on the northern side of that stream buffer that bisects the property, we are looking at 108 single-family units north of that stream buffer, and 216 townhomes south of the stream buffer, and that's a total of 324 units. Now, with that number of units, and again, conceptual, but this is what we feel is best for the site, this would result in a residential density of 4.9 units per acre, if you're only using the 66 acres that we would intend to develop, or 4.2 units per acre, if you consider the entire 76.2 acres that we are rezoning tonight. And again, the area to the west, we've had very, very preliminary talks with some in the city about how that could be utilized as a public benefit. I don't have much more to report in terms of, you know, conversations and what that could be, but we do expect that that remaining portion could be served in some way to benefit the community at large. And so to summarize our rezoning request, we believe that this rezoning furthers the goals of the city's future land use map. It adds housing variety along Oxford Loop Road and within the city of Oxford generally. With the westernmost portion, it creates the possibility to locate city resources that again, benefit the area overall. And by limiting our density and the building types, we believe that this is a compatible request, given the city's plans and policies that have been put forth. So again, we thank you for your time, thank you for your patience in helping us get this presentation set up. Patrick, Wayne, myself are available if you have any questions. And again, we thank you for the time and the opportunity tonight.
Thank you very much. Board members, because of this particular presentation, even though we have not closed the public hearing yet, do you have any, any questions at this time for our presenter?
Just one.
Mr. Mills.
Go on first.
What?
Just one. On this diagram we've got here, it says reserved for amenity centers. Is that amenity center just for the residents of the Boislet and General? Would it be available to any city resident? Yeah, the, on the map here, it's got, this area here is reserved for an amenity center.
Right.
Is that just for the residents of this development? Or would it be for any resident?
Right, it'd be a homeowners association.
A homeowner's, all right.
Would provide those, we would, we would, put them in, and then they would maintain and operate more the residence.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bridges.
Yeah, just thinking about the amount of water and sewer that would be required to support this project, should this board be concerned about being able to provide that and also taking into consideration existing development?
That's a great question. And I spoke with Ms. Ratliff earlier today about the city's process for identifying capacity of both water and sewer, and at what time the city undertook that. And so her response to me was that typically how it goes, and the applicant would submit a sketch plan whereby that would get sent to a third-party reviewer that the city is contracted with, who would determine whether there was existing adequate water and sewer capacity. And so while it may be a question outstanding for the development generally, it is my understanding that that is analysis that is done later in the process, similar to a traffic impact analysis that would take place at site plan. Ms. Ratliff told me, and this is common, I think, for most municipalities, is that I don't think you would ever get to a scenario where you would be, you know, receiving permits for a development that the city has determined does not currently have adequate water or sewer. Now, there are things that the applicant or the property owner could undertake, you know, off-site improvements in large pipes, in order to provide for adequate water and sewer capacity. But in terms of the underlying zoning of the property and the conditions that we have set forth, we think from a, from a policy perspective, that this zoning map change makes sense. And at a later date, once we have a better sense of the total number of units that we are proposing to add, not only will we have better information for a traffic study, but we'll have better information for that downstream sewer capacity study and the water study. So to answer your question in a lot less words, it is important, but I don't necessarily think it's part of the zoning discussion.
Mayor, just as a general comment, when these plans are submitted, even at this level, you take a look at the water, and in general, we're prepared.
And we do, again, we have identified potential connections for sewer on the western portion of the property that we anticipate would remain undeveloped, at least for our residential development. And then for water, Patrick Barbeau and his analysis has identified existing water lines and potential hookups along Oxford Loop Road. So I think the points of connection are there, and then it'll be a determination of whether the capacity is actually for the given number of units that are present.
Excellent, thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Mills? Okay, with that, we thank you very much for your time and the presentation, very helpful. Is there anyone else in the section to the left that would like to come forward to speak on this issue? Is there anyone from any section that would like to come forward to speak on this issue at this time? Okay, with that, I declare the public hearing closed. And we move forward to the next item, which is, let me make sure I'm... which is, let me make sure I've got the right one, item B, 4B, which is a public hearing to receive citizen input on a non-contiguous annexation request. So, this public hearing that we just had was on the zoning portion. Now, we have to hear input on a non-contiguous annexation request from CAB LLC for seventy-six-point-eight-seven acres located off the outer Loop and Landis Road. The property meets the following requirements for non-contiguous annexation. One, the property is within three miles of the city's primary corporate limits. Two, no point in the annexation area is closer to the primary corporate limits of another city. Three, the annexing sitting must be able to provide the same services to the annexation area that it provides to areas within its primary corporate limits. And four, the total area does not exceed ten percent of the area within its primary corporate limits. And you have support information in attachment B. So, with this, with this, I declare the public hearing open on the non-contiguous annexation request from CAB LLC. Is there anyone in, I'll start on this side. Is there anyone in the section to our left that would like to speak on this issue?
Mayor, I'll just say that, you know, as you stated, the potential annexation meets the criteria for non-contiguous annexation, we would, we would ask that we take a hold of rezoning prior to the vote on the annexation. That's all.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. Is there anyone else in this section to our left that would like to speak? Is there anyone in the center section that would like to speak? You feel compelled. And for the record, please, again, state your name and address.
George Foster, 313 Cherry Street. It appears the purpose of the annexation, of course, is so the developer can build these houses. And we've had a chance to see a presentation as proposed by the applicant, and I must say, I'm substantially underwhelmed by it. The, there are holes in it, they're quite large, and the, the whole idea between this non-contiguous annexation is so that this project can be, can go forward or can be approved. And frankly, if that's the reason, I exhort you not to do it. You're adding to the expense of maintaining city water and city sewers in an area that's out of town, and I, I'm unable to see the benefit. Perhaps I can be enlightened by some of you at, you know, at a later date or when we meet on the street.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foster. Is there anyone else in the center section that would like to speak on this issue? Is there anyone in the section to our right that would like to speak on this issue? Last call. Would anyone, regardless of where you're sitting, like to speak, come forward to speak on this issue? Okay, with that, I declare the public hearing closed on the annexation issue, the non-contiguous annexation. With that, we move forward to item C, which is a public hearing to receive citizen input on the request from Granville County ABC Board for a text amendment of the UDO from sections 2.4.3 of the permitted use table and 5.3.7A to allow ABC stores in the central business district as a permitted use. The applicant is requesting the text amendment in order to add to the existing building located on New College Street. The old zoning ordinance established in 2003 allowed ABC stores to be permitted in the central business district. The proposed amendments would allow the governmental use of the building to continue with the proposed expansion to the building, and in attachment 4C, you have the changes written in red in that attachment. Now, I do understand, and Ms. Hart can correct me, but it is my understanding that the applicant has notified Ms. Hart that they no longer request the text amendment with respect to the parking. I think we're having someone ready to come forward and speak. Do you want me to leave that to you?
Whatever you want.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll finish my sentence and then, and then let you come forward. And they are requesting, actually, to only change the use to a permitted use in the central business district. But with that explanation, I will invite anybody in the section to, oh, let me declare the public hearing open. Mr. Wren.
Thank you. Jim Wren, I'm the attorney for the ABC Board, and we have only one matter before the board tonight, and that is a request to have an ABC store declared as a public, a permitted use in the downtown business district. It was previously a permitted use, and when you did the UDO amendments, it was intentionally, unintentionally not a permitted use, even though the store is in the same location as been ever since I can remember, making these small trips as a small child. We would, we would ask that you approve that text amendment, and we are withdrawing the one about parking. That one we'll bring back as a variance, and we understand there were some concerns about the manner in which that text amendment was put forth, so we will be happy to do that as a variance. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions, board heads.
Okay. Colleagues, any questions for Mr. Wren?
Okay. And I would say, at your earliest opportunity, Mr. Wilford here has a surgery scheduled tomorrow morning that has to leave home about 4:30, and he's very eager to see this through, so. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anybody else in the section to our left that would like to come forward to speak on this issue? Is there anyone in the center section that would like to speak on this issue? Anyone in the section to our right that would like to come forward? Okay, last call. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward to speak about the request for a text amendment to change ABC stores to a permitted use in the central business district?
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Okay, with that, I declare the public hearing closed. So, we would go forward to vote on these items, which is item five, City Business. The first one is, A, to consider approval of the conditional rezoning request from CAB Granville LLC of the thirty-seven plus or minus acres from RA to GR10 within the Oxford ETJ. The recommended action by the planning board and staff is to recommend approval of the conditional rezoning of the thirty-seven plus or minus acres to GR10 with the noted conditions attached. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Okay, we have a concomitant motion, I think, from Commissioners Toby and Khan. Is there any discussion? Okay, with no discussion, all in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item B, to consider accepting, this is split in two parts, accepting the certificate of sufficiency for petition of voluntary non-contiguous annexation of the seventy-six-point-eight-seven acres owned by CAB Granville located off the outer Loop and Landis Road. The narrative, I Cynthia Bowen, City of Oxford City Clerk, to hereby certify that I have investigated the petition attached hereto and have found as a fact that said petition is signed by all owners of real property lying in the area described herein in accordance with General Statute 160A-31, and you have support information in attachment 5B. The recommended action is, staff recommends accepting the certificate of sufficiency for petition of non-contiguous annexation. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by, that was Commissioner Bullock? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Now, item C is to consider adopting an annexation ordinance for CAB Granville LLC for property located on the outer Loop Northeast and Landis Road. The entire property is seventy-six-point-two-nine acres with thirty-seven-point-nine plus or minus acres in the city's ETJ. And the ordinance wording is on the back page of attachment 4B, not 5B. The recommended action is that staff recommends adopting the annexation ordinance for CAB Granville LLC for property located on the outer Loop Northeast and Landis Road. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Okay, I'm gonna go with Commissioner Bridges this time. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion stands adopted unanimously. Now, we proceed forward to consider approving a request from Granville County ABC Board for a text amendment of the UDO from sections 2.4.3 of the permitted use, use table, and I don't think we include the 5.3.7, do we?
There we go.
There you go. To allow ABC stores in the central business district as a permitted use, and your support information is in attachment 4C. The recommended action is that staff and the planning board recommend approving the text amendments as proposed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Okay, that was a unanimous motion, I believe. I'm gonna let our clerk decide too. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously, Mr. Wilford.
You can go.
You can go home.
Hey, that's the ones that broke an ABC store, that's why you had a good sense.
There you go. You're just trying to work with our partners here, Mr. McCoy.
We didn't wanna see Jimmy Wren walk too far.
There you go.
Yeah, everybody, roll us, don't they go next door.
Well, it closes at nine here, so they better get there to herd.
Okay, let's go to item E. So, we have three items here at Considering Public Works. Consider adopting the resolution to accept revised loans and the associated revised capital project ordinance for the 2018 waterline improvement projects, College Street and others. The board previously accepted the Division of Water Infrastructure loan offers and passed tentative resolutions to award the above projects contingent on additional funding from the Division of Water Infrastructure. DWI and the local government commission have approved the increase of the loans. The city now needs to pass revised resolutions to accept the loans and the revised capital project ordinance associated with them. In addition, a closing fee of two percent for the additional amount over the first loan will be required. As it happens, that first loan, well, let me go through here. The recommended action, staff recommends adopting the revised resolution to accept the increased loan offer for the amount of five thousand two-hundred-and-fifty, five million, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars with five-hundred-thousand principal forgiven that is repayable at zero interest from the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund and the associated capital project ordinances for the 2018 waterline improvement projects. This amount actually, the increased amount was previously approved and with the original closing fee, so there is no new two-percent closing fee additional amount. But we do request that you adopt the revised resolution to accept the increased loan offer in the amount of five million, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. So, with that, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion, I think that was Commissioner Bullock I heard first. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item F, consider adopting the resolution to accept revised loans and the associated revised capital project ordinance for the 2018 sewer line improvement projects, College Street and others. The board previously accepted the loan office, offer from the Division of Water Infrastructure and passed a tentative resolution to award the above project contingent on additional funding from DWI. DWI and the local government commission have approved the increase of the loan. The city now needs to pass a revised resolution to accept the loan and revised capital project ordinance associated with it. A closing fee of two percent for the additional amount over the first loan will be required. And for that item, the, the original closing fee was ninety-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty dollars. It now increases to one-hundred-and-twenty-two, eight-hundred-and-forty-three dollars for a difference of twenty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. The revised loan total is six million, one-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine, and the original loan was four million, six-ninety-six-five-hundred. Recommended action, staff recommends adopting the revised resolution to accept the increased loan offer in the amount of six million, one-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars that is repayable at zero interest from the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund and the associated capital project ordinances for the 2018 sewer line improvements project. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Toby? Any discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Lastly, consider adopting the resolution to accept revised loans and the associated revised capital project ordinance for the 2017B waterline improvements project, Hillsborough and other streets. Board previously accepted the loan offer from the Division of Water Infrastructure and passed tentative resolutions to award the above project contingent on additional funding from DWI. DWI and the local government commission have approved the increase of the loan. The city now needs to pass a revised resolution to accept the loan and the revised capital project ordinance associated with it. A closing fee of two percent for the additional amount over the first loan will be required, and this amount, in this case, is a difference of seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars for a new total of sixty-five thousand and seventy-four dollars over the original fifty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-eleven. The recommended action, staff recommends adopting the revised resolution to accept the increased loan offer in the amount of three million, two-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. The original was two million, eight-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-five-sixty-two, with a one-million principal forgiveness that is repayable at zero interest from the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund and the associated capital project ordinances for the 2017B waterline improvements project. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah, I wanna beat Toby up.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. We turn to the consent agenda and ask that we accept the February 22 finance report by Finance Director Haak Eng, as well as to approve the following 2022 meeting minutes for our February retreat on the fourth and fifth, the agenda meeting on the seventh, and the regular meeting on the fifteenth. What is the pleasure of the board?
We accept the agenda as presented.
Okay, we got that move from Commissioner Bullock and Mayor Proten concomitantly. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am?
I am, I am, with regards to the consent agenda, we're, we're, we're not asking for any type of presentations or anything with regards to explanation of how funding is, is spent or anything like that. We're, we're taking this document as, as it is, in a sense, right?
Are you referring to the minutes or the finance report?
Finance report.
Okay, so when it's in, that can, to just accept it, yes. If you would like to pull it out and have Mr. Eng review it, as he did, I think, two months ago, then we would have to do that separately and we'll put it separately in the agenda.
Well, I would like to see that, given all the monies that are won coming into the city, then all the monies going out of the city, and just listening to some of the public comments, that seems to be some of their concerns also, just to make sure that we're all in one accord about the inflow, the outflow of money, the cost of, of various things, to keep it on the forefront, and all the citizens then would have better access to it and a better explanation. And not to say that we need to go line by line or verbatim for everything that's going on, but for the big topics of- on, but for the big topics of what the meeting is about that night, to show it and how it impacts us positively or negatively, as far as cash flow coming in, cash flow going out, and the potential costs way down the road. I mean, and if he has that level of insight, that will be an asset to the rest of the community making an understanding, you know, where we're going and how we're gonna get there. I mean, so I truly think we need to, you know, to have that dialogue, and it doesn't have to be laborious or over our head type finance. I'm talking, you know, you know, this month we have an extra $10, and this is what we're gonna do with it, you know? I mean, so whatever. I mean, but I think it's important, given where we are at this stage of Oxford. We're on the brink of major growth and development, a lot of uncertainty, and we don't need to go back and say we missed something, or we didn't think about it, or, I mean, I think everybody needs to have an idea and hear it and hear it again.
So you are requesting from the board that going forward in future meetings, we add back a brief hit the high points report from Finance Director Eng and to review the finance report, the monthly finance report?
And particularly a lot of the stimulus money that has been poured into communities to let everyone know that one is available, two, this is what we're doing with it, this is what we plan to do with it, this is what we spent, and this is how much we have left. I mean, so, anyway.
So...
However it best flows based upon the agenda for that night, or that meeting. I mean, as far as the information that the Finance Director shall provide, or should provide.
Right, so I mean, he is, his report always follows a standard format.
Right.
So is there general consensus from the board that you're good with Commissioner Gilreath's request that we put that back on the agenda as a presentation, as a report, as he has done in the past?
I would just say we've got the report, and he's always available for questions if we have it, that primarily anything that's unusual or extra be highlighted.
Right.
As opposed to a full review.
No, no, I'm not suggesting a full review, by no means am I suggesting that he needs to tell us ever who paid taxes, you know, and then he can, I'm just messing, but anyway. But I'm just suggesting the highlights and the big issues.
Great, okay. Ms. Arng, are you agreeable to that in the future?
Well, I, certainly, I am at your disposal, because, you know, anytime you have any questions concerning the budget, we approve the budget for the whole year. That's my guidelines, and so each month I have all the details, line by line, and that year the auditor, any party that comes in, they come through every line. And the local government commission has put really strict, their guidelines really strict, if there's anything at all, if there's two incidents, two issues, the board would have to sign off on it.
Right.
And, yes, I would be willing to do whatever, you know, in a year or two.
Excellent.
Ahead of time we get this, and if there's any particular department you want to drill into, we can do it.
Okay, excellent. So Ms. Bowen, for next month, we'll pull that, it still needs to be accepted, but the report, so it would be included, but the report portion would come first. And if there is any, as Finance Committee Chair, as Mr. Arng has said, if there's something in particular that you would want to hear more information, you can certainly communicate that to him ahead of time.
So you want the report with the consent agenda and then the vote?
Well, don't we, we have to...
Or do it in the presentation?
We'll cover that tomorrow, right?
Right.
I've got it.
Okay.
I think I know exactly what you're looking for.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much. So with that, because we didn't, Mr. Arng wasn't prepared for that tonight, are we good with going forward to voting on the consent agenda tonight? Excellent, any further comments? Okay, all in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? Motion carries. And so with that, before we adjourn, Commissioner Con, do you have any comments that you would like to make?
Briefly, to reiterate, congratulations to Police Chief Ford and her swearing in this evening, and thank you to all the city staff for the work that you guys do. Highly appreciative of all of it, that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Gilreath?
Well, I came prepared tonight. I, um, the mayor started off the meeting today with Chief Ford's accolades of being the first chief, and I reflected on that, thinking that it's National Women's History Month, and I'm amazed sometimes when I look at where the city of Oxford is. We have a mayor that's been with us since 2011, we have a Mayor Pro Tem, female, we have myself, and we have a board of three women, right now, that has never happened here in the city of Oxford. We have, you know, the Planning Director, we have Engineering, we have...
Recreation.
Recreation, we have HR, and we have a brand-new Chief of Police for the first time as a female, you know? This is major. And then it's happening where? In the city of Oxford? You know, this, I mean, when you reflect on women's history, it is absolutely amazing to have this number of women in leadership roles and doing the things that are happening right now as we speak. So guys, thank you guys for what you do, and I am so proud to be part of this team of women from Oxford, North Carolina.
We agree, thank you.
No disrespect to the men, but it is, it is major for small...
Because we don't have the men in this town, that's why.
I think we got a few.
Rolled out at the ABC store.
So kudos, guys.
Well, that's a wonderful shout-out, thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Tovey?
Just one thing, we received an email this afternoon, and I looked at this article that was written by Dan Barkin on a North Carolina magazine. And I just wanna thank Allen and the city for what they're doing. This is an excellent article, and it really shows Oxford going places, and I wanna thank him very much for being part of being so positive about it.
Well, I would like to add to that, that he deserves a round of applause, because he reached out to them and said, "You need to see what's going on up here," and took them all about town and spent a good deal of time with them, and obviously, by the tone of the article, they were very impressed with everything that Mr. Thornton did. So we appreciate your taking that kind of initiative and reaching out to get our name out there to the rest of the world. I'm sure that that's got a pretty decent circulation.
Statewide.
Statewide, so that's wonderful, thank you very, another round. Thank you so much, Commissioner Tovey, for pointing that out. Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah, I just wanna say ditto to what Commissioner Gilreath said and Commissioner Tovey, because I did read that article also, it was sent to us, and I was very proud of what we have accomplished as a city, and I know there are bigger things going forward. Now, I have known Chief Ford for over 25 years probably, and since I work in the court system, obviously, we have crossed paths at one time or another. And I just believe that this is a well-deserved position, and I congratulate you and your husband on this achievement. We've been friends a long time, and I have great respect for your work ethic and what you've done in the police department, and I expect that you will carry that on as our police chief. So congratulations again, and that's all.
That was lovely, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
They've taken all the thunder, but there's special congratulations, and there's a special connection with not only this being the month of the woman, but Chief and I have a special connection.
She arrested you.
Tell them what it is, our name.
There you go, that's right.
Our name, we're very proud of it, so if you don't know our names, just ask us. But I'm extremely proud to call you my chief, and when you get feedback from the citizens that are so excited about you being our chief, you knowing our city, and the citizens knowing you, that encompasses a lot, so congratulations and thank you. And Mr. McCoy, there's some men left. At the liquor store.
We do what we can, okay, bless you, thank you. Commissioner Bullock?
A couple things, please. Number one, again, congratulations, as others have said, and then thank you, Allen, for that. I've been contacted a couple of times about a trash litter situation on Lewis Street down in the creek. Ms. Hart's office is aware of it, I just wanted to acknowledge publicly that we do hear complaints, and we do try to do our best to rectify those situations. Number two, I was a proponent of the roundabout, well, I have now seen a new usage of it. The pedestrian walk on Spring Street, right there at OBC, has become a shortcut. So instead of going around the roundabout, as they come from Spring right up to Main, they're now taking a U-turn there into pedestrian crosswalk. I've seen that on several occasions.
Oh, aren't they ingenious?
So just wanted to highlight that so that we can be aware of.
So they're just looping?
And use them pedestrian crosswalk as a way to cut across instead of going out and around the roundabout.
My word.
I've had a chance to serve as a greeter for the church a couple of Sundays, and every Sunday I've been there, I've seen it used.
They're missing all the fun.
Well, they're trying to create some fun that we don't need.
That's absolutely true, so Chief Ford, I was about to use the wrong title, Chief Ford, you've heard it.
It was duly noted.
There, thank you very much for speaking to that. Commissioner Lumpkins?
Yeah, I guess everybody's said it all. Yeah, I absolutely wanted to congratulate Chief Ford. We all know you'll do a great job, and we're very lucky to have you with all of your experience and have been here for a while, so that's invaluable, and I'm excited for the city of Oxford that you're here. Also, I wanna thank everybody that spoke tonight, had productive discussions. You know, one thing I did think about, you know, with all the growth, obviously, I'm excited for all the growth that's coming, and I do want to echo, and I know we've talked about this before, to take seriously what that growth brings, and that includes, because we were, you know, it was on the top of my mind when I came here today, because I go through these intersections close to where all this proposed development's going, that we, I just wanna make sure that we're taking these traffic impact studies seriously, because it's already pretty bad over there, and, yeah, that's just one thing I wanted to say, but I think that's it.
I think that's a very good point. If it was up to me, we would be having lots of conversations with DOT about roundabouts at a lot of these places, so that we can stop lines of traffic, stop at lights, and keep the traffic moving, so I hope we can do that, so thank you very much. I have a couple of things before I pass it on to our manager. One of them is a thank you note that I received a while ago from Robbie and Jim Wren. Dear Mayor Serjean and Commissioners, I apologize for being so late on this thank you note. Thank you all so much for naming the City Employee of the Month after our dearest son, Morgan Adams Wren. Thank you, thank you, Robbie and Tim Wren. So I just wanna read that for all of you, so that you would know how much they appreciate that, and we have their son's picture ready to be hung in the office downstairs, and the Employee of the Month with the certificates is in the frame right next to it. It's hung now? Okay, that's great, so they're right next to each other in the entranceway of the executive office suite. I can't add anything more to the congratulations that have been mentioned. Yes, I think all of my women colleagues are awesome, I think all of my colleagues are awesome, and I feel very lucky and privileged to be in this position, and so it's just great. We have a great staff and we're doing great things, and Chief Ford, rock on, thank you so much for coming back. Giovanni, thank you for sharing with her, sharing her with us, we appreciate that greatly, and we think that things are happening in Oxford. And one question that I have related to all this growth, and I know we're going to be discussing it when we jump into our comprehensive planning process, but I was asked, and I also had the opportunity to be on a greenway in Raleigh, and it was a little bit of heaven right off a four or five-lane road, and all of a sudden I felt like I was in the woods 10 feet away, it was just amazing. So Ms. Hart, we have, in our UDO, we have a, on page 143, we discuss that all new utility easements should have wording that accommodates non-motorized traffic, you know, ped, bike, and greenway opportunity within that easement, and I just wanted to double-check, because I would assume with these developments coming in that that, the next piece that happens with that is utility easements. So are we emphasizing that with our developers about, so that we can preserve these corridors for bike-ped opportunities?
You know what, and mentioning what Commissioner Gilreath said, our recreation direction brings it up every week.
Okay, so every news, so we can hope that one way of keeping Oxford green as we increase the density is that with all the new utility easements that we will have, if we want to develop them for greenways, we'll be able to. Thank you, ma'am, okay. Mr. Thornton?
All right, great, I won't keep you long, I do have one question. Mr. Ford, did you come all the way back from Alaska just to be here tonight for the swearing in?
I got it over the weekend, so...
Okay.
There's medication.
All right, please take one, pass it down. What you are going to look at, and we'll do it briefly tonight, and I don't expect a decision to be made tonight, this may well go on to the agenda for the Public Works Committee meeting, since it needs to meet pretty quickly and have a conversation about this as well. This is the traffic circle, okay? Right now, it's bare, and we're coming up on spring, thank goodness, we're now in daylight savings time, it looks like spring may finally be here with the temperatures, and it needs to get planted in some way, shape, or form. So this was an initial stab at a potential design proposal for that traffic circle, the roundabout. I'm not really thrilled with it, to be honest with you. I have my thoughts on it, my thoughts on it are looking more for something that's essentially recreated twice a year for a warm season and... twice a year, for a warm season and a cool season, and that you have less permanence to it in order to accommodate seasonal fixtures to be placed in there, such as a Christmas tree or anything else, because that's why you put electricity in there, for one thing, that's what's there. So, you know, rather than putting in permanent shrubbery and things like that, you know, we may wish to look at more something that is a really big splash of color, especially for the warm weather season with the blooming potential there, and for the fall season, winter season, something, you know, that's more conducive to that season and has some survivability and will allow you the flexibility of putting in something in the center that's seasonal, such as a large tree with lights, those types of things. So, I wanted the board to see this, because we, we need to make a decision on that pretty soon, too, to take advantage of a full growing season and get that started, if that's where we're heading, so, if it is the pleasure of the board, this is something that we will add to the agenda for the Public Works Committee to take a look at and encourage everyone to participate in that meeting after you've had a chance to mull that idea over and bring your thoughts to that meeting, or submit them to me prior to it, and I'll certainly share with the committee, and we'll seek to move forward with something that is not only spectacular, which is the way I've, you know, put it to staff, is that I want something that really is just stunning as it can be to the eye when you arrive to Oxford there in that traffic circle, that's what I'm looking for personally, so, I know everybody's probably got, you know, some different thoughts about what it could look like, what it is to be utilized, but, you know, I could envision something there extremely attractive as an entryway, as you come into the city with, in addition to that, all of what we talked about during Amy's presentation that goes along with that.
Wonderful.
So, you know, you're, you're adding additional components to the downtown master plan, doing all those types of things, while thinking about growth and how it's going to come and be accommodated, and what people want, what people are looking for, you know, all these things that are coming to Oxford is just another part of it. So, mull that one over, and we'll place it on the agenda and have some additional conversation at our upcoming Public Works Committee meeting, and with that, that's about all I've got for you this evening. Other than to say, as far as the financial report, you know, we talked last month about specificity always being good. If there is some specificity about what you would like to see or hear in a financial report, please let us know ahead of time so that we can touch on that. You know, the emphasis behind you getting that one-page synopsis month-to-month of the city's financial position is to keep you up to date. That's what that is for, that's why that was created, and to give you and the general public an idea basically of where the city stands financially, when the first one was provided in October of 2017, you had nine million some-odd dollars roughly in all of your funds. You now have twenty-three million.
Yep.
Across your funds, so the city's in pretty good financial standing, but if you have some specificity in regards to, you know, grant funding or grant programs or where it's going, if that's what you'd like to hear about, just let us know, and we'll make sure that that's what we touch on.
Excellent. Thank you very much, we certainly appreciate that. And Mr. Burnett, is there anything that you would like to bring up?
Nobody, I don't have anything.
Okay, then what we have on our reminders is Regional Creek Week, March twelfth through March nineteenth, though I think that Alyssa is putting out information on celebrating our creeks, and I'll tell you, I went walking with our recreation director this morning near one of them, and they, they're beautiful, it's just great, so nice, and Mums Morning Out, which is sponsored by the DOE DC, which is this Saturday, the twenty, no, a week from Saturday, starting at the Orpheum from nine to twelve o'clock, and I think there's some other event that's in Granville County, the Viking something, but that's...
The Viking Experience.
That's right. There's a Viking Experience somewhere.
It says the...
It's at the...
Okay, okay, and so what's the date on that?
I think that's the twenty-third, but it's Saturday.
This coming?
I don't know.
Okay, excellent, there you go.
I forgot to mention one more thing, which was thank you to everyone that came out and attended last Wednesday's event at the Orpheum for our Main Street Award winners. That was, that was great, and appreciate everybody turning out and showing their appreciation to those folks that, you know, invested in Oxford and are helping with the renaissance that we are seeing.
Yeah, oh, they, they certainly are, absolutely, yes, thank you. So, with that, oh, yes, Ms. Bowen?
I need checks for any spouses for the Granville County banquet.
The chamber?
Chamber.
The chamber, Monday night.
I've got yours and I've got Ron's.
And you need mine?
I need yours, and anybody else that's taken...
For fifty dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that's the twenty-eighth, yes, Mark's the twenty-eighth.
Next, not this Monday, but the next Paul's Monday.
I don't think it's the twenty-eighth, yes, it is the twenty-eighth, you're, you're right, it is Monday, the twenty-eighth, so, two weeks from yesterday. Okay? Excellent. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Oh, I think there was Commissioner Khan, Toby, and Bullock, all at the same time, all in favor, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? Thank you all for coming out tonight, be safe and sound on your way home, we appreciate you.
Well, we won't, there are a couple words on ABC Store offices.
I'll reach out to them tomorrow. Yeah, okay, that's great, yeah, I'm working myself, they were...
Take care, Teresa.
See if I've got a picture.